Open meeting board of the board of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement.
I am the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, including Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place of this agenda was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Number three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. 3.1, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
3.2, adherence of the December 6th, 2021 regular meeting. Approval of the financial report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund inter-account transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and declaring the following items as surplus.
Okay, agenda item 3.2, December 6th, 2021 regular meeting. We did not see any errors in our notes. Agenda item number 3.3, talk attachment regarding the investments. Today, although all those are current. The second attachment is the financial report that I provide you monthly. And so if you take a look at that, open that attachment, you can see that I believe we collected, and I need to get my notes, and I'll bring that to you next month, but I believe it's over 100% of our collection for gross production, so we over-collected from our estimates at this point. Motor vehicle taxes also up as compared to last year, REA tax, and we're still behind a little over school loan areas account. If you look at the next part of the attachment on the same page, bottom of that document there's a comparison between FY '21 and FY '22. You can see that our revenue is up as compared to last year, and our expenses have remained fairly steady. And I put that in number four on our final page. So revenue increase of $940,000 as compared to last year, and our expenses are up as compared to last year, $67,000. On our activity fund report, agenda item 3.4, Mrs. Durkey has done a great job of keeping our activity funds up to date. There are no real new changes to any of those accounts, and those are all in good state. Agenda item number 3.5, we have no activity fundraisers this month. Agenda item 3.6, we have two attachments that I might be able to open. The first attachment is for our Alba tournament, or both of these pertain to the Alba tournament. First attachment is an inter-account transfer, and this was to begin our basketball tournament. And so this money was taken out of our basketball account as startup to purchase different supplies for concession and our tournament in general. And so this is to reimburse that global account. The second attachment is going to be our AHS concession activity account, and they're going to purchase the excess supplies from the tournament to use through the remainder of the basketball season. 3.7, our child nutrition fund report. I have a comparison for you here today. You can see that we continue to serve more students in both lunch and breakfast. I want to report to the board that we continue to have a really strong fund balance in our child nutrition fund, and so we're going to be getting with some students and teachers and look at some renovation possibilities with our high school cafeteria and make that ever more inviting place. And so as we move along through that process, we will report that back to you. Agenda item number 3.8, we have no items of surplus. Are there any questions? If there are none, I would recommend approval of our consent agenda items.
Do you want to take a motion?
I vote that we approve the consent agenda, those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.7.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order of purchases for the following funds for fiscal year '22. 4.1, general fund as referenced, and 4.2, child nutrition fund as referenced.
Okay, we'll begin with our general fund, agenda item 4.1. First attachment, general fund purchases. Out of there, go through a couple of those. Purchase order number 391, Amazon tablet services for $7,500. That's a purchase order for supplies, as well as purchase order number 392, mobile office supply for $2,500. Purchase order number 398, $2,275 amplified IT. That's Chromebook printing that allows for IT department to track printing and also service printing for all of our Chromebooks. Purchase order number 399, SDS education. That purchase order for $7,877 is made out through our federal programs, so we'll be reimbursed for that, and that will still replace some activity panels here at the high school, Mr. Beeler, Mr. Lee's room, and Mr. Stevens' room. Purchase order number 400, $2,860. That is for some new stage monitors and speakers in our auditorium. And I might mention, as I'm thinking of it, if you get an opportunity to go to the auditorium, we've replaced all the lights with LED, and it's a different auditorium. It's amazing, amazing difference. So if you get a chance to go to the auditorium for the next couple of days, and you can come up, we can take you down there and show that. Purchase order number 402, index of Oklahoma, $3,400. So what that will do, that's going to put, repair and replace locks, our key card locks here at the high school and also Lincoln. And so we've got some repairs and some additional locks that we want to make into key cards, and so we'll be working on that in the next month. Purchase order number 404, Propp country shovel lay, $21,150. That is for a 2022 sub-urban, we traded it over suburban with higher mileage, received $2,000 for that trade-in and purchase a newer sub-urban. Purchase order number 405, Kellogg and Sovereign. That is a new E-Rate emergency connectivity fund that we received, and so Kellogg and Sovereign helps us submit that application for E-Rate. We're going to use that new E-Rate money to purchase Chromebooks, sturdier Chromebooks. For here at our high school, we can move some of these to our middle school, and then our Chromebooks that are not as durable will move to our elementary schools for 4.1. The second attachment is a general fund payroll, and we have substitute payroll. In our child nutrition fund, agenda item 4.2, we have two purchase orders there. One of those, purchase order number 17, is repairs to the block and freezer, $200, which will be hidden there. And then purchase order number 18, general parks, that is for the oven at the middle school, $1,000. Are there any questions about the expenditures in the general fund for the child nutrition?
Mary Ann Lynn would be proud of us that we got good lighting in the auditorium.
Mr. Brock, we were actually talking about that, and we think it's going to, there used to be a, because of the way the lights were, there was such a divide that the pictures would never turn out well. And it's, I took someone in there and said, "Did you repaint?" And I said, "No, we just fixed the lights." That's the difference that makes. You won't believe it. It's literally crazy. It's amazing.
Slow but sure. Want to take a motion? No items. Make motion, make set 4.1, 4.2, 4.3 as presented.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, agenda item 5.1, resignations, retirements, and assignments. We have three resignations. The first is Mary Tyler, who is going to pursue her education through education. Lisa Eagleton, the freshman, turning her resignation in our good service department. She has other opportunities that she will be pursuing. And the final one is Monica Sterling. Monica has been a parent of our children for 14 years, 14 years, and has done great jobs, and we share her best thoughts. Agenda item 5.2, we will start first, and if you want to open up the first attachment, you also have a copy. It is the Alba Public Schools Learning Plan '21-'22, and it has revision at the top of that, 121521. And I've got that sent up here. Part of the requirements for our federal funding with SRR3 is every six months, we're here to meet and to revise our plan. And so we received a notice about a week before school was out that everyone, regardless of when your plan was submitted, needed revising it by, I think it was December 22nd. So we had a stakeholder meeting in the auditorium on December 15th. Had a really good turnout. You can see, I highlighted, and it's highlighted on your document, a few of the changes that we made, and most of these changes were just in the vocabulary to maybe explain it a little bit better. Nine key components had to be in your return-to-school plan, and so we met all those the first time. What we tried to do is clarify those. And so I wanted to list out or recognize those that were able to be there. Sadie Wilson, teacher in Washington, then Egner, Washington teacher, long fellow teacher, Mrs. Halliburton, Mrs. Hill, long fellow Lincoln teacher, Mrs. Rainey, and Mrs. Clapp. We had Mrs. Woodall that represented the middle school from Washington, Callie Mossberg, long fellow Lisa Hermanian, and Tiffany Reeker, Lincoln, Angela Norton, Michael Zinnerman, and then the middle school, Tommy and Tom and Lisa Wickham. High school teachers, we had Crystal Burrow, Dixie Meyer. And high school parents, we had Jeremy and Lockston and Misty Macklinson. So we had really good attendance with this, and we really appreciate their help. So I want to kind of walk you through a few of these changes. So social distancing, you can see what we highlighted there. What we wanted to make sure that we had in our plan to meet some of those, meet that nine indicators, was that although we weren't in cohorts now, that there could be that possibility, and could we declare the state of emergency. And I might tell you the process for this. So we went through, we broke down each area by rows, and they all looked over the document, gave me the feedback. I put in their feedback and sent it out to them, and then they upprinted it and sent it to me. So very collaborative effort, and I really appreciate all that. Hand-washing respiratory etiquette. I highlighted that because we had hand sanitizer, is what we called that in particular area. Committee felt like it would be important to maybe be a little more detailed about what that meant in terms of possibly being questioned about our plan. And so then we felt like it was important to go ahead and have those particular instructions for that etiquette. There are also, you can see, hand sanitizer will be available. We obviously left that from our previous plan. Students with disabilities, we just wanted to clarify, any IEP that we meet currently in this level, please, you tell me, and it'll probably, it will be like this forever, has a contingency in the event that schools go bankrupt. So anytime we meet in an IEP, no matter from the beginning of this year, and I believe it will happen forever now, we will always make that contingency if there is a virtual need, if we want to make sure to meet that need. We didn't really feel like that was real clear in the first time, so we wanted to clarify that in this document. Case investigation, one of the suggestions was that we didn't really have a student that we isolated. We felt like if our plan was reviewed at federal level, that we needed to articulate that in this document, and so we did so there, that we didn't isolate, and that we didn't have any question. With regard to the use of funds, scroll on down and turn the page, I guess, through the documents, two little pages. The American Rescue Plan, SRR3 spending plan, again, something that has to be reviewed. These plans are through 2024, and so we will continue to revise these every six months. And it may not necessarily be a revision, but we will continue to meet to seek input every six months. And so these spending plan, we were very broad, and I told you, stakeholders who we met, we were very broad in our plan, because one of the things that we found throughout this is supply, inflationary costs, numerous roadblocks or challenges. We got some professional development plan for Monday or Tuesday, and we came back and the speaker had to cancel. And so, you know, we anticipate there will be other moments where we will have to adjust our spending plan, and so it's broad in its scope. I might mention that over the break, we had our architects and engineers looking at our gym for the HVAC, and we hope to have something that I can bring back to you, some kind of proposal at the federal level. Okay, so on the next agenda item, are there any questions that you all have about the services plan? Okay, I might mention also, one of the things that we are looking at as an administrative staff is the well-being and safety of our students. And with some of our SRR funding, we have been approved to purchase vape-detecting machines. And so Mrs. Martini and I have met numerous times to, with Mr. Morton, most of those are IT cloud-based machines, and so we are looking at the purchase of those equipments for our restrooms and lockers. And so we'll update the board when those are installed, when that does happen. Okay, so Ms. Lovelace, last month, we had the special ed report attached, and Ms. Lovelace is kind of will be there, and so thank goodness she is here this month. Ms. Lovelace does an outstanding job for Alba Public Schools, and we could be more fortunate to have her as part of our team, and I think you'll recognize that as she goes through and gives us a brief summary of this report on our special ed program. So Ms. Lovelace.
I did try and have a copy. I didn't know we were going to have that in the US Steel Bureau. So every time I stand up, everybody takes a deep breath and goes, "How come you're so good at this?" So I just wanted to, in your hand, the first document you'll have is a letter from Todd Lockston. He's the executive director of the Special Education Department in the State Department. And so just, if you'll notice in the middle, it says "meet requirements." Like it has a lot of words, and then it says "meet requirements." So those are the most important things. But I did want to go over briefly how we get to that score. There's two things that we look at. So I will. The first thing is the risk score. So if you'll go ahead and turn to the page that looks like this. They take into account certain things that are risk levels, that the research will show what makes up potential problems or potential noncompliance. And so our MOE, or maintenance of effort, we are always compliant with that. Timely, you know, we make sure things are on time, we try to. The size of the award is another thing that is taken in consideration. The more the money, the more the risk. That's just the way it is. They also take into consideration if there's a change in the special education director, and there hasn't been. So usually you get, on this particular form, you want to score low, so the more points you get, the higher at-risk you are. So if there's no change, you don't get a score for that. Excess cost, I know all of you guys know what that, but we just make sure that sped funds are spent above what everybody else gets. So, you know, our sped funds are spent for extra needs, and so we meet that. Audit findings, we haven't had an audit, and so there wasn't any findings ever. Special district design, that means, do we have a co-op? Do we have a charter school? Do we have different designs of our structure? And we don't. So we're just all, you know, considered a common type of district. Late complaint, late claim submitted, we didn't, you know, we meet our deadlines, or we try really, really hard to do that. Complaint count, we've had zero complaints. That's actually registered with the State Department. If the State Department gets called, then we get points for however many, every time there are registered complaints. So I do feel like we do a good job there. Years, now this is, this is out of our control, and we got a five on it. Years since prior onsite monitoring, we don't know when they're going to monitor us, but they keep track of, if the longer that you've not been monitored, you get more points for that. But we don't determine that. So it's kind of, anyway, we got a five. Out of our control. And so then budget training, if you make the budget training, you get a bonus point, and then also, if we turn our application in, we get a point. And then also, if you are a first-year director, you can actually go through their program, and then you get a bonus point for going through their little first-year director program. I have served as mentored on that, on mentors. I didn't, I wasn't a mentor this year, though. So the next thing is just our indicators. So we look at the risk level, and our score was a five, which means that it's a very low risk, and that's what you want to score. Then we look at our indicators. This is, and I know for your reading later, you'll want to go ahead and look at these descriptions, but these are our indicators that we get graded on, and their definitions. So when I pull out this form, this is the definitions of what I'm talking about, okay? Just a little light reading after the board meeting. Mr. Feely, you'll have to read that.
I will.
Okay, thank you. So just looking at our indicators, okay? We met the fact that all of our kids, this indicator one, it looked at 19, 20, and 20, 21, and we both met those, which is exciting. What they do is they have a cohort of students that come in their freshman year, and we follow them to their 12th grade year. And if they graduate by their 12th grade year, then we've met that indicator, okay? So we met that this year. I'm super excited about that, because in years past, we haven't. The dropout, we met that. That's self-explanatory. Then, of course, we look at participation, performance, and we also look at gap proficiency. So we met all of those, you know, it segregates it by grade. So I did highlight the ones that are no, okay? Because I also feel like we did meet requirements, but you always have to look to see how you can maintain your excellence. And so this is where we would try to maintain our excellence. Rate of proficiency is how many students in that fourth-grade math cohort that receives special education services are proficient, okay? So that's 8.3%. The state target was 11.5. And Mr. Feely, this data will actually match some of the data that he is going to show. So then, that's the rate of proficiency. Then they look at gap of proficiency. So the difference is, you take all of the students who are in regular ed, and you see how far away they are from proficient, and you compare that to students who are receiving special education services and their gap. Does that kind of make sense? So we're looking at how far away from the target are we in both groups? And they want students with disabilities to match that of students with, who are not on an IEP. So they look at that gap and see how we're doing. And again, we have some nos there. So significant discrepancies, we didn't have enough data in this category, in this indicator, to count. So NC means noncomplete. That doesn't mean that we didn't do something. That means that there's not enough data to count, okay? So we didn't get deemed on that. So then, our school age, least restrictive environment, y'all, we rock this. We rock this category. We do, because we walk out inclusion every single day. We provide inclusionary settings every single day. And so if you'll notice, that the state target is 71, and we're hitting 95. So our students who receive special education services, for the most part, are being served in that, in that regular ed setting. So that's something that I love. Every year, we meet that really well. Okay, early childhood environments, these are our threes and four-year-olds, and we didn't meet two of those indicators. But the way our three-year-old, the nature of the way we have it set up, we do not have typical peers in that setting. We just serve students all together who all receive special education services. So we don't have a regular ed setting for those threes. We just have services that we provide. So we kind of go into that a little, since I've been director, we've not met that, just because of the way we set things up, okay? So do y'all have questions about that?
Yeah, I do. That's interesting.
Yeah.
At what age do we identify?
We, three is when we take over. So part C students are those sooner start students that are birth to three. We are part B, and that's our goal, and we go from three to 21.
Got it.
Yep. So we take over at three. So anyway, so we have two nos there. So we've got some, we can improve on that. So our outcomes, this is when they come to us, we give them a score, and then when they leave our early childhood program, we give them a score. And so if you'll notice, when they come to us, they're a certain number, but we increase, they increase at every level, which is really good. The only one that was a little in question was some of the use of appropriate behaviors to meet their needs. But we're still doing a really good job there. So when they come to us, we make them better. So that's exciting to see, too. And of course, this is kind of my thing anyway, so I love it so much. So then, parent involvement, those are those parent surveys. We take a minute, we have parents do, and we got 98% of our parents to do that. Disproportionality in race, we want to make sure that we're not over-identifying in a particular race. And we never have had that since even before, I've just never seen that yet, Alba. And then we also don't want to be disproportionate in a specific disability. So there's 14 disabilities, and we don't want to all of a sudden identify specifically So Part C, uh, students are those Sooner Start students that are birth to three. We are Part B, and that's our, our goal, and we go from three to 21.
Got it.
Yep. So we take over at three. Um, so, um, anyway, so we, we have two no's there. So we've got some, we can improve on that. So our outcomes, this is when they come to us, we give them a score. And then when they leave our early childhood program, we give them a score. And so if you'll notice, when they come to us, they're a certain number, but we increase, they increase at every level, which is really good. The only one that was, um, a little in question was some of the use of appropriate behaviors to meet their needs. But we're still doing a really good job there. So when they come to us, we make them better. So that, that's exciting to see, too. And of course, this is kind of my thing anyway, so I love it so much. Um, so then, parent involvement, those are those parent surveys. We take a minute, we have parents do, and we got 98% of our parents to do that. Uh, disproportionality in race, we want to make sure that we're not ident, over identifying in a particular race. And we, we, we never have had that since even before, I've just never seen that yet, ALBA. And then we also don't want to be disproportionate in a specific disability. So there's 14 disabilities, and we don't want to all of a sudden identify specifically learning disability too much, okay? So we never do that, we met that. Uh, child find, that just means that our data is on time. Early childhood transition, that means that when they do come to us with Sooner Start, we have it in place in thirty, uh, 30 days of their, uh, of their third birthday. We have to have something in place, uh, to serve them, and we meet that mark. Secondary transition is just making sure they have a plan after school. Post-school outcomes, this, uh, this is when kids leave us, and are they, you know, are they continuing their education? So we're meeting those marks. Resolution sessions, we don't, we haven't had one since I've been here. And mediation sessions, we haven't done that. And then the last one was the year of, uh, end of the year of data reporting was not on time. We clicked it, Mr. Parker and I clicked it. We clicked it! And we, uh, we got, we thought we got a confirmation, but then, uh, we got an email saying, "You didn't submit that." And so there wa, there was a, um, we used the system that was down at the State Department. And so, anyway, I'm not making excuses, but let me tell you, it's gonna be finally submitted, for sure, this next coming up year. So, I, but I do want to show transparency. Um, and then this, this next part is, is, we're finished with that. So if you'll just want to go back to the fact that, having said all of those things, we met requirements. So do you guys have any questions for me?
Is there anything that we as a board can do to help you?
Um, hmm, no, I don't, I can't think of anything. Um, the one thing I do want to figure out and brainstorm, how we can better serve, we do a really good job at three-year-olds. In fact, please, please, please come and see what we're doing, because if you, if you can't be happy, like, you just need to go talk to someone. I'm just saying, if that doesn't make you happy, right? Um, but I would like to eventually maybe, you know, typical peers or something like that, that wouldn't make that a special ed setting, but also include, like, regular ed kids, too.
Miss Lomish, why is that important?
Because if students who receive services are just around other students who receive services, they never get to see that typical peer model. And we as educators can do a lot of things, but that peer model is so strong and so important that they can pick up a lot of language and a lot of, because a lot of our students in our three and four-year-old program come to us without words, without language. And the best thing that we can do for them is submerge them in language.
And isn't it quite a gift to kids that are possibly, but not on IEP?
It, it absolutely is.
To help serve those.
It is, and I've never seen a district, I have to brag on our, on our district and our kids, I've never seen a set of kids more accepting of students who receive special education services than our ALBA kids. They really, and I feel like it's because we do inclusion well.
I agree.
Yeah. So I, I feel like we're, they're, just accepting diversity is something that is a skill, you know, and our kids have it, like our ALBA kids have it. So, do y'all have any other questions?
Hats off to their parents.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you have any questions, Ms. Parker?
Great job.
Was it seven minutes? How long was it? I know he even hesitated to call me today.
No, that's not true. That's not true. So this month is School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to present all of you with a certificate, and thank you for your service. Uh, I can't imagine a board anywhere in our state that doesn't model excellence like this board does. And so, uh, on behalf of myself and our administrative team and our teachers, thank you for what you do and how you serve our community. Agenda item number 5.3 is our strategic plan. We have, uh, this has been, this has been really difficult, and you have a copy at your table. This has been a real challenge, I guess, with the restart of our strategic plan. Challenges in a lot of ways, and, and just that, that COVID year just continues to haunt us. And so when we met together as an administrative team, we tried to figure out how we could strip away some of the layers. Some of it was just too much. And what do we do to, to get back on track? We can get back on track in a way that's sustainable and not overwhelming. And so we went through, and, and I've highlighted here some different action steps that we want to try to accomplish this year. And so, um, I will read through these as quickly as possible, but I want you to stop me if you have any questions. So provide professional development on common knowledge and language literacy. Provide professional development on common knowledge and language of active student engagement. So we continue to try and, and provide those opportunities for learning, not only administratively, but also with our teachers. Culture and community, improve involvement and satisfaction is the objective under this area in our strategic plan. And so when you look at, gosh, those first three or four action steps, you see those are surveys, and those are things that we did last year. But we want to refine those surveys a little bit, and we certainly want to get more response. Um, I think I mentioned we had 400 and some. We want to try to improve that each year. And so, um, we're gonna do some surveys again for preferred communication. We're gonna look at, uh, responsiveness that we have as a school. Determine how to implement the leadership program at each school site. I want to thank, um, Mrs. Webster. She's done a tremendous amount of work, uh, with the committee last year to identify a, a character program. And so now the challenge is, how do we implement that character program? How do we do that without it becoming one more thing, without it becoming overwhelming? And so we're gonna work with our, with our teachers, we're gonna work together to try to find, um, a way that we could implement something that we feel like, not only our community has asked for through this strategic plan, but something that our students need as well. Establish a committee to develop and execute and oversee an after-school program. We felt like this is something that we can get that committee off the ground this year and begin discussions on what an after-school program would look like. Uh, and through that, um, be able to have a discussion if that's something that we feel is important in the direction that we would want to head as a district. Involve parents and community in existing and developing committees. All of these are linked, and, um, just want to kind of, I wanted to open this one up and just give you an idea of the committees that we've been able to, to form and, and work with our stakeholders and our teachers. And when you, when you go down through it and you, and you look at it, it's really amazing, the input and, and the, uh, involvement that we've been able to have. And so really thank for our administrators, really thank for our teachers, all of their work that they've done through this. Um, we know we pay dividends in the future. Personnel, determine gaps in staffing or support departments. Uh, we want to work on, you know, what do we need, staffing support? And so, uh, we are going to form a committee and get that together, and hopefully be able to bring a recommendation to the board later this spring. You see completed by these next two. Um, and I think, again, we'll talk about school board recognition. You know, we looked at salary and wages. Allison did a lot of, lot of legwork on calling schools in Kansas to find out substitute pay. And, and when you look at what we did as a district to improve that, and we've seen an increase in substitutes. And so, um, I appreciate the forward thankfulness of this board and the work of our administrators, uh, as we increase the substitute wages, uh, across the district. Resources, we met, uh, wait, I think it was in November. Allison, is that right? Or December? My months are running together, but we met.
I think in November, yeah.
With a, with a large stakeholder group, over 30, uh, in our auditorium, and began to talk about our next steps for facilities. And so we're going to meet again this spring, and take that next step on where we want to be and what we want to do for our facilities. And so appreciate Allison's work on that, and all those that attended. Um, we want to continue evaluate, evaluate our schools per se, assess the need for a facilities manager. One of the things that we found is, you know, a lack of a work order system and how we can, uh, principals do an amazing job, um, throughout their workday, from instructional leadership, uh, to facility management, to disciplinary behavior, uh, you name it, they do it all. And, and so we've got to provide some relief for our administrative team and for our teachers to have that go through personal and, and excellent facility improvements. Resources, uh, kind of talked about those a little bit on the previous page, but also, this is our district technology plan to continue. And that's kind of, we found that, that through this online environment, we are constantly revising and reviewing our technology plan. So, um, we know that we need to survey our students and teachers, and we need to get some responses on how we're doing, what we could do differently. And so we attack that this spring. And then lastly, we want to update our scorecard. We'll provide a link to the scorecard when we're able to do that onto our website, and that goes through and updates our performance measures. And so, um, I want to lead into Mr. Feeley's presentation by showing you our website. We have an accountability tab that we created. And on that accountability tab, we have a couple of things on there, and this will continue to be populated, um, with important information that we want our community to be able to see. And one of those things will be our strategic plan scorecard. Right now, it has our student transfers, and it has our annual audit. And as we get more information completed, we'll continue to update that. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. Feeley, who will provide a, uh, a brief.
Sure.
Report on our state test scores.
So when we started the strategic plan, we started with our, with a baseline number of where, uh, where our state test scores were. That would be the, on the 18, 19 test scores. And then each year, we were trying to grow those scores to meet an ultimate goal in the 23, 24 school year. 19, 20, no data, that was COVID year. So, um, there are four performance bands, advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. In the old system, basic was limited knowledge, and below basic was unsatisfactory. They changed the names of those. And so the graphs I'm getting ready to show you will be, uh, graphs that show advanced and proficient equal anything that's proficient or above. And then graphs that show basic and below basic would be considered, um, not passing or failed on that particular test. So this will be our, uh, 2021 ELA failure, failure rate proficiency scores. And what this amounts to is, this will be the first year that we've tested since the baseline of our strategic plan. And so the blue bars represent those that were in the basic or below basic. The red score, or the red bars represent what our strategic plan goal was for the 2021 school year. And the goal is representative of the number of proficient or advanced students in, in those grade levels. And so our goal was 72% in third-grade ELA, and it was at 38. Our goal in fourth-grade ELA was 50%, and we hit 38. Same thing in fifth grade. Sixth grade was 40%, and we hit 25. And seventh-grade ELA was, goal was 40%, we hit 25. And then 50%, and 32 is where we were at as far as eighth-grade ELA scores. So going on to the next slide. Well, before we do that, Mr. Parker, go back to.
Okay. Mr. Feeley, right, right quick, before you leave that slide. The blue amount represents percentage of our students that failed?
That failed, uh, the ELA test. That would have scored in the basic or below basic categories. And the gold represents those that were proficient or advanced.
So all of those represent over half of the kids in our, in those classes failed?
Correct. And, and, and we have some previous years to compare that to, uh, as well. And I can show you those if you'd like.
And then that tells me I'm in the wrong.
Okay. All right, you go on one. So, um, we've got, there were our goals over here on the side, that were also represented over here on the, on the bar graphs. That's perfect. Get to the back space, bud. All right, so here's the math. Third-grade math, our goal for this particular year, uh, 2021 was 80% proficient, and we were at 51%. And what you see is kind of a downward trend. By the time we hit, uh, eighth grade, we're at 13% proficient or advanced in eighth-grade math. And 87% would have been basic or below basic, failing that, that exam. Now, what I would make note of is that, you know, there are going to be kids that would, would be at or near that passing proficient, uh, mark. And sometimes, it's one question, two questions, that they're off. But one or two questions is one or two questions. So, uh, there, there is that, that trend. That being said, if you, if you went back, I mean, one question that people will say is, is this because of COVID? And I, and I would suggest that it's not, because we were in school during COVID year. Uh, there were a lot of schools that weren't, but we were. Um, now, that's not to say that we didn't have some kids out on quarantines that may have missed some instructional, particular standards at, at any given time. But, but by and large, we were in the building, so. Yeah, so I'd go, you know, let's go on a few more. Let's, let's look at 18, 19, and 17, 18. So this would be 18, 19 ELA, and, and you see still that similar trend that you saw in 2021. Yeah, go on one more. Uh, here's 18, 19's math trend. 74% were proficient in third-grade math, and then 14% in eighth grade. So, so once again, if you go back and you compare that to 2021, this is a very similar trend line that you would find in 2021. So I would, I would go back to the COVID question, and I, I don't, I don't know that we can make a, a direct correlation that COVID was the cause of the 2021 scores. So, you guys have any other questions? And we've got 17, 18 data, if you want to see it, it looks very similar to this one.
So I thought, you know, you guys might take, take your, take this month, review this. And if you have any questions, we can, um, maybe get some other slides next month also with regard to the scorecards.
So as far as high school scores go, before I sit down, we no longer give end-of-year instruction, and have it for several years now, but we do give the ACT. And we'll, we'll look at some ACT data down the road. We were, we don't have real clean data on that, because they used to send us what was called a college readiness letter, which told us how many kids met the benchmark. And ACT does some funny things with their data. They may report seniors on a particular test date, and that might not have been their best test score. And so we're trying to get to where we got apples for apples comparisons. And, and that's why we don't, I'm bringing the ACT data to you right now, but we will down. Okay, any questions? Thank you.
So what, what are you recommending that we think about this a little bit and then come back?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'd like for y'all to review them and bring us back some questions that maybe you feel like we need to answer next month.
Okay, and we'll have, we can see that.
I, I've got hard copies for you guys, I'll give them to you after the meeting's over. That's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, item number six, items of current business. 这点one, discussion with the council board action. Lojo approved the ALBA school district calendar for school year 22, 23.
So if you look at the attachment, you can open that up. One of the things, Tiffany Martin, Megan Murphy, Cecily Fromm, the couple's been in fight. Parent representatives for this committee. Parent representatives for this committee were Mary Longhurst, Kayla Klein, Brenna Heaton, Brooke Pinkleton, and Joelle Randall. We had a really good couple of meetings. And so kind of the procedure for adopting these calendars is bring a couple of calendars to the committee. They take those back, and then we bring, we have another meeting before we make provisions. We try to provide at least two options. This year, we provided three for our teachers and staff to vote on. And very appreciative of the work this committee did. You know, I can tell you that when we met, and Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, we really changed, it was a very collaborative effort. We really changed these calendars immensely to try to meet everyone's needs. And so I think this will be a good calendar for our teachers and our students. Our beginning of school day is August 11th, and our last day of school is May 19, 2023. Any questions about the calendar? If there are none, I would recommend it's approved.
So move.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Item number 6.2, discussion with possible board action. Vote to accept a $10,000 donation to the outdoor education activity account and a $10,000 donation to the ALBA high school criminal account. Vote from the Charles Morton Shared Trust Foundation.
So board policy, we recognize any donations in excess of $10,000. And we want to thank the Shared Trust Board for their donation to vote with this program. So the outdoor education program, Coach Foster, who has been implementing this strength and conditioning program, but they'll work on Fridays with that. And so this is a much needed donation, so we appreciate that. And the ALBA high school tournament donation is to help offset some costs for next year. And again, this trust has been not only critical to our community, but also our school district. And so we thank those trustees for this donation, for that money to get used for our kids. If there are no questions, I would recommend the item 6.2.
We're very blessed to have all of the, given that we have our community. We have a motion and second.
I make a motion that we approve 6.2.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
See any items of new business?
No.
Siding, adoptees approved by earlier action. I'd like to grant a motion to adjourn. Mr. Parker?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.